All right, I'm calling the Bradlebrook Planning Commission meeting of Wednesday, May 29th, 2013 to order. Mr. Valente, can I be with us this evening? So the vice chairman will run the meeting. First, let's look at the minutes of April 22nd. Does anyone have any comments?
Was there not minutes from the last meeting? Or did the last meeting-
We didn't really have a meeting.
Oh.
So this is our last minutes to be approved.
Any comments?
Okay, any comments?
As usual.
Yes, would anyone like to-
I move to accept the minute of the April 22nd meeting of the Planning Commission.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone not in your favor? There we go, approved.
There we go.
There we go. I'm gonna make my own rules of order.
I'm in class here. I feel like I should get my little-
Does anyone have any announcements?
Do you want to poke my thumb? Actually, yes. At the June 24th meeting of the Planning Commission, the upcoming meeting, Chris Campney from the Wyndham Regional Commission will come to discuss the work of their Renewable Energy Siding Committee and their report to the Public Service Board.
What does that mean? What's the Renewable Energy Siding?
And why is he coming here to us?
Can't be good.
No, it's good. It's good, it's all good. There has been, with the current administration, the Shumlin administration, there's been a lot of more enthusiastic pursuit of renewable energy projects across the state. And the rules governing the location of larger, you know, so-called industrial scale, but just large.
Didn't they have meetings around the state for input and stuff?
Yeah, renewable energy projects has caused some controversy. It's currently under the purview of the Public Service Board. And the extent to which communities can intervene and the extent to which policies and goals of local town plans affecting the location of, or, you know, limiting or influencing the location of renewable energy facilities is somewhat constrained because of the current regulations governing the Public Service Board's take-up of that material. In other words, they don't give, they don't give a lot of status in the current circumstances to the local town plan. So a siding committee, and then there were some controversial measures. There was a proposed project for Wyndham, the town of Wyndham, which was controversial here, and then there's been some projects in the Northeast Kingdom that have also attracted controversy. And there's a moratorium in part of the Northeast Kingdom on future projects, and the legislature debated the issue at length this last session. So the commission was formed to review the current approval procedures for large-scale renewable energy projects, and they've made recommendations. So Chris Campney was on that committee and is gonna basically report out on their work.
Okay.
So it's not a big deal for Bradlebrook per se, because for various reasons, we're not very high, our hills aren't very high, and we don't have, you know, significant other assets that would be, you know, controversial to develop for renewable energy.
Large-scale solar would fall under the same purview though, wouldn't it? I mean, it's not as controversial, but-
Very, yeah. Very large-scale.
Technically-
Yeah.
You know, a four-acre.
Probably, yeah, there's already-
Well, a megawatt, isn't it a megawatt is where the line gets drawn?
I think so.
I don't know how big that would be.
What about the Putney Project?
Bigger than four.
Four acres?
Bigger than four.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, like, yeah, that's a good one, right?
The Putney Project?
You mean at Westhill-Buchtop or-
No, they're doing some community solar.
There's some, there's a project-
Oh, the one up in, yeah, it's not very big.
No?
Not, it's not a megawatt.
It's not a megawatt.
Yeah, it's probably five, somewhere between five and 700 kilowatts. So, you know, it's not huge.
Actually, that's, I think that's why they often make them that size.
Exactly.
So they don't have to go through all that.
Under the threshold.
Yes.
Yeah, well, it makes sense.
Which is still a lot. Five, 700 kilowatts, probably several houses.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, a house is, a house, 10 kilowatts.
Right.
That's still a lot.
Yeah, 70 houses. So-
So he's coming on the 24th.
He's coming on 24th.
Okay.
That's it.
Are there any other announcements?
The 24th of June.
Yes.
No, my usual, I just wanna say the curbside composting program is in force, and they come every week, and pick up all recycling now every week, and some people haven't realized that, that the recycling now, instead of being every other week, has gone to every week also with, because the truck that picks up recycling is the one that picks up curbside compost. And I've reduced my trash, my trash, to something like one of those little plastic shopping bags from Price Shopper.
Yeah.
Hardly even full.
Me too.
It's just so amazing to see that.
It's excellent.
Of course, I have to create another wastebasket in my house, but anyways, it's very exciting, so people can still sign up, I'm sure.
They didn't get 5,000 households yet, did they? That was the goal.
Yeah, no, but they got enough to-
Yeah, close.
Close, to put it, to let it go. This is the second week of it.
That's great.
And a lot of people don't, they say already compost, because a lot of people compost in their backyard with their garden, but this is, even if you do that, you can still keep doing that, because the curbside compost program takes dirty paper towels, paper cups, wax paper-
Meat, chicken bones.
Animal waste.
Animal waste, meat, chicken, fish, and stuff that you wouldn't put in your backyard compost.
Yeah.
It also takes your kitty litter and-
Pizza boxes.
Yep, and like ice cream containers and all the to-go containers that are recyclable, like from Chelsea Oil and Co-op and stuff, so.
People put them in the recycling a lot, they don't belong in the recycling, they can't be recycled.
Okay, that sounds like-
Because the grease content.
Pizza boxes, yeah, because they have food product on them.
That's right, that's right.
That should be the extent of our public service announcement?
That's right.
Any public comment? There is no public-
James is not here today.
Present to comment?
Yeah.
Okay, so now-
I'm running through the library on the computers.
We'll have a discussion of the Planning Commission bylaws.
Yep.
James was to do this.
Yeah.
I don't have a clue, so please proceed.
That's okay. So a couple of issues have come up of late, that I'm sure, because you're commissioners, you're all familiar with this. So you should have seen a memo dated May 20th from Sue, went out in the previous packet, and it, oh, actually, no, it didn't, it went out of an email in the mail recently. It looks like this. What it does is offer an attendance policy with five steps. And so there's two items to be considered for the bylaws, and you should find a copy of the bylaws in your packet. The first one is the attendance policy, which we currently don't have. Most other boards and committees-
Is there a packet there that I can steal, because I actually, although sometimes I just don't bother to bring it, this week I think I didn't actually get it.
Oh.
Which would be unusual.
Isn't it being emailed on the stuff? Is that a question?
I think it is being emailed, but I can't access the interwebs.
Well, here's a copy.
There you go, here's a full packet.
Thank you.
Do you want to share, or you want one each?
Take a look.
Okay, all right. So, two items, one is attendance, which we don't currently have a policy on. Most of the boards and commissions in town actually do have a policy on attendance.
This is fascinating.
And then the other one is changing the frequency of meetings from twice a month to once a month. Because there's only four-
I don't know that I have that one.
Would you like one, Liz?
I have a mobile food vendor.
Yeah.
I'm assuming the attendance one doesn't-
Let me make sure you've got-
Here, you could just look at Liz's. See, I don't have any of that stuff.
See how we're conserving favor?
Unless it came in the email, I could print it out.
Probably like 20 copies somewhere.
Unfortunately, you're not conserving my gray cells. Okay, so tried this one. Would you like one too, Caroline, or you're good?
We'll share.
We'll share, because I have, I've got the bylaws, I just don't have those two things you're talking about.
All righty. So let's deal with the more problematic one first, for which there's a memo. Changing the meeting schedule should be pretty painless. And then just as a other kind of introductory remark, Sue and I talked about this today, if there were six or even seven commissioners, well, there couldn't really be seven commissioners present right now, but say there was six of you, there probably wouldn't be much issue about, you know, discussing it tonight, moving a motion, and approving the changes. But because there's only four of you present, you're theoretically just making a quorum of the original number. So I think what we'll do-
Kind of proves the point there, doesn't it?
It does underscore precisely the point. And so taking that into account, one of the things we could do is just record the comments that you have this time, and then put it to a vote at the next meeting, assuming that we get a better attendance than four. Right?
Or we could vote on it.
Yeah.
And be damned?
Yeah. We're the quorum.
I think, I think we should, as a, you know, purely as a statement of the problem itself. Although, and of course, I'm part of the problem, I'm probably the reason this got drafted, but-
Actually, no. You've been saved by-
By others who are worse than me. The only thing that I, we might want to discuss is the very last sentence of number five on this says, "A commissioner may only be removed by unanimous vote of the select board."
Yep.
To me, that seems like a high bar.
It is a high bar.
I wonder if majority or majority-
But is that within our purview to change?
Yeah, but here's the dealio, yeah. You are, as individual commissioners, you are appointed by the select board, so the only body that can really be doing the removing is the same one that does the moving, and that's the select board.
It can't be majority vote?
That's probably, I wonder if that's even our bylaws, or if it's select board bylaws that determine that.
Or if it's state.
It's not state. I can't, I can't tell you if it's a select board, you know, that it's a requirement of their, so that's a question, that's a good question.
I tell you what, why don't we vote on it?
It's not a big deal to me, I just thought it was a good discussion.
And if there's some, if there's some leeway with that last thing, we'll just vote on it again the next time.
That's right.
Is that how it works?
That's how it works.
It's how it's working today, which is great.
Yes, this is going. I know, I said vote on it, I didn't say pass it.
Okay.
I was thinking about.
Yeah, she held back on that. Very good of her. Showed a lot of experience and maturity. So the other one, once a month?
Yes.
Think of it this way, it increases by 50% your chances of making one meeting a month.
That's one of my favorite Woody Allen quotes, but I shall say it here.
Okay, so any, do you want, do you want to throw that into this motion?
No, separate motions.
You want separate mo, on the-
Separate motions.
Okay.
So one on the attendance policy, one on the meeting date.
Yes.
Let me just get ready for this.
I motion we accept the attendance policy as written.
Yes.
Oh, is that the-
Timberlake seconds.
Is that the actual, which one is it?
As written.
Do you have it? Who has it?
The attendance one?
Should we take a picture of it, just to make sure that's-
Well, I wanna read it now, knowing I'm gonna be voting on it, I was reading-
Oh, that was just skimming it for perusal.
Yeah, I got the essence of it before, I thought we were just gonna talk about it.
Too bad we don't have commercials.
Yeah, this was, are we open for discussion now?
Sure, discussion-
I mean, when I first came on the commission, I filled somebody else's term that they couldn't complete.
Right.
And there was another person on the commission who we never saw. So we were always, when I came on, and this person just didn't show up, or they had other commitments, and, and we had conversations about-
It puts more pressure on everybody.
How to deal with that, when this person, you know, what was the chair's function? What could they do? Because we didn't have a policy then, and how to resolve that, you know, so it was even, I mean, it's been an ongoing thing. I mean, we have people who travel in a different kind of work situations here, and sometimes my disability gets in my way, but we've been kind of relaxed in our attendance, I just want, since, you know, since this year began, I guess I could say it's gotten, my observation is it's just gotten more lax or never-
Well, I'm sure that people have, you know, legitimate reasons, but that doesn't mean that we shouldn't have a policy in place.
Yes, yes, I agree.
And it seems like a very bear-minded and flexible-
And I also, as long as we're not voting on something, I think we should still meet. I mean, I get, I don't know, I mean, I know you're calling around, having Julia or somebody call around to see who's gonna be here, you live out of town, and so that makes a difference for you, but I mean, my way of thinking is if we're not voting on something, we should still meet.
We do, right?
Well, last week we didn't, but I think it's, you know, it's one thing to ask the commissioners, because they're volunteers and blah, 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 but, you know, staff, they have, they're here all day. If they don't have a real meeting, you know, I should think that they should wait.
But, but I mean, if you keep doing that and there's no quorum, we could end up, I mean, this happened in the past, maybe you end up going a couple of meetings without meetings, you know, and that's, it sort of defeats the point.
The issue with three people turning up and then deciding to go ahead with the meeting, and it's definitely a matter of opinion, there's no policy or rule about it, but the concern is that you can, you slip into making policy decisions, or discuss things, or move, move matters in a particular direction, and be inadvertently contravening the bylaws in other ways, and in particular, open meeting law, so-
Sounds like a slippery slope.
Yeah.
It's, I get it.
I see what you're saying, which is, which is, okay.
Yep, yep, it's different, it's a whole other kind of-
And it's a very-
You know, we're not voting, you're saying it can-
It's a very subtle thing, so-
Yes, yes, I got it.
It's why we're really sort of, can get fairly, you would be, literally, you would be shocked to see how much legal opinion and even case law goes backwards and forwards around the question of whether three select board members bumping into each other at a gas station or a general store constitutes a meeting or not. And they're, you know, it's extraordinary how frequently, A, that occurs, and B, people challenge it.
Sure, we're a small town.
That's right.
And we're very community-based.
Like, you're not talking about here, you're talking about throughout the state in the world.
Yes, yes.
So-
Oh, I've heard people here talk about it, though.
Oh, yeah, you'll get it here, but it's, you know, and it's prevalent, I would say, across the state. So I guess, you know, particularly because staff are involved, say there's Sue and I, and then three of you, our concern would actually be that we would be lending legitimacy to a process that raised questions concerning open meeting law and the bylaws itself, so-
I didn't think of it from that point of view, I thought of it just from an efficiency point, getting our work done and information presented and whatnot, because we can always watch it afterwards on BCTV, if you want, besides reading the minutes, so.
Right, so that's, that's the major obstacle to being counted in.
So then it would be nice to go to once a month.
Yep.
And I did talk with Sue around a lot of the reasons why, workload-wise and stuff.
We think the cycle-
Would make for a better meeting when we have one.
Right.
I think so, too.
Right, and, and, you know, in terms of the framework for the meeting, or like, how long it runs, or how we wanna set up the agenda and things, I mean, it could run longer, I think that we also think that we could shape information in a different way, and present it in a different way, and, you know, the process could, could be a little different, and, you know, there's also nothing preventing people from taking a break, if it's a longer meeting, you know, those kinds of things are all perfectly appropriate and legitimate, but we think that, just in general, between volunteers who are trying to find the time to do it, and particularly, you know, with work movements that take them out of town or whatever, and a bunch of other considerations, we think once a month is better. Apart from the DIB and the select board, this is the only body that meets more than once a month. All other commissions and committees in the town meet once a month or less, apart from those two. And, you know, they've got, well, actually, the DIB meets once a month.
Yeah, they changed that to, to be twice.
Right, and that was a nightmare when they were twice a month, because we were never beyond the cycle of constantly putting out warnings and agendas and all that kind of stuff, and it was just, you just, that was most of what the office was devoted to, and it was kind of, it was totally unproductive in that sense. And so there's an, there's an aspect of that with this as well. It would make, it would make for more efficiency in our office to go to once a month.
If our meetings can be more efficient, isn't really the right word, but-
Just effective or-
More effective, and the way things are presented, and more awareness to time, and keeping, keeping on agenda and whatnot, I think it sounds great.
Okay.
Any more, any more discussion?
My opinion.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Do we want to vote on that first motion?
Yeah, the motion was made about the attendance.
Yeah, the motion was made about the attendance.
Yeah.
Is it specific enough? I guess the chair, if somebody, the chair will discuss the member, so.
It allows for flexibility, for someone to have a quiet conversation with the chair, which I think is appropriate.
Oh, yeah. Does it need to say something that the chair or the, can ask somebody to step down, or is that, again, not part of our-
Well, I think that's implied within this quiet conversation.
Right.
Yeah, I thought so, too, it just wasn't, doesn't need to be more specific.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't spell that out.
That it gets a little na, little na, 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 na.
I think the general idea is for it to be a role of the chair to bring it to the attention of the commissioner. And if the commissioner's aware of the policy, then they gotta be expecting the conversation, you know, so-
So this'll just be added to our-
Yes, inserted in the bylaws.
Okay, shall we take it to a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
I hear it's unanimous.
Okay, so then another motion on attendance, maybe?
Okay.
No.
I'm sorry, attendance, I'm sorry, meeting schedule.
Okay.
I move that the Planning Commission move to a once-a-month meeting.
Yes, so let me refer you to the right, to the right section of the bylaw, and then we can maybe frame that sentence a bit better. So, oops, wrong thing.
I was looking for, regular meetings, section six.
Yep.
Regular meetings shall be held on the second and fourth Mondays of each month. I mean, if it's, if they're deemed necessary because of workload or something, or some project that we needed to go back for a short period of time, because it's twice a month, I wouldn't want us to not be able to do that if it was necessary.
We would always call it special meeting.
Yeah.
Are we going with the second or the fourth? I would prefer the second.
Yes.
It's easier, too, because a lot of holidays come in the fourth, Thanksgiving, and Christmas, and Memorial Day, and all that kind of stuff.
This is the point, actually.
Although I have other conflicts with the second of the month, but that's all right.
Okay, so a motion would read something like, "Regular meetings to amend section six," first sentence, so that would read, "Regular meetings of the commission shall be held in the municipal center at 6:00 PM on the second Monday of the month."
Question slash issue regarding that, we just said that Chris Campney is coming on the 24th, which is the fourth Monday of the month.
Yeah.
So we may-
This would start in-
We could have a special meeting for him and them.
Well, actually, we predicted you'd do this, Jim.
You, me? I'm impressed.
Because you've got the technology. And we figured out that if you make the start date for once a month, July 1st, which is when the new board will be appointed, the new commissioners will also be appointed.
Yeah, that's the beginning of the-
So, and that's sort of the beginning of the life of the new commission, as it were.
Right.
All right?
Yep.
So, and that regrettably means to get two meetings this month, on the other hand, it'll be the last time you meet twice this month.
We have two more then for June, and then we move to the-
Yeah, two, two for June, and then it goes to, yeah, so does that solve the problem?
Provided that you, you've anticipated our vote before it's been cast.
Right now, I'm in town for both of them, too.
We had this all figured out. All right, so-
All right, any more commentary before we vote?
So do we have to say what you just said, or can we just?
There'll probably be data coming from one of you, yeah.
All right, I'd like to amend section six of the Bradlebrook Planning Commission bylaws, that's on regular meetings, and I'd like to remove the first sentence and have it replaced with, "Regular meetings of the commission shall be held in the municipal center at 6:00 PM on the second Monday of each month," and then continue with the rest of the paragraph as written.
Okay. Anyone second that?
Okay, shall we bring to a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Hearing none opposed, the measure's passed.
Okay, and then my only other suggestion would be, if you felt like inserting, or deciding where to insert the attendance policy, but that's okay, we can figure it out. I think it probably would come, probably between-
After section seven, probably, because you're talking about meetings.
Yeah, after section seven, yeah.
Regular meetings, special meetings, and then attendance.
Yep, so that's my suggestion, too.
Shall we leave that to the staff?
Or under quorum?
Yeah, we can figure it out.
Yeah.
Okay, that's great, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, item F, discussion of zoning for mobile food vendors.
Okay, so you should have a memo in your packet from Sue that was sent out prior to the last meeting, that would be the main meeting.
May 8th.
So it's dated May 8th, and it's a brief memo, and then a draft of language. And so for tonight, the things that we need to do is, I need to explain to you, once you've had a chance to read through the memo, exactly what the issue is, then work through the language with you a little bit. Then the idea for tonight would be to set or schedule a date for the public hearing, because it's a typical zoning change, so it requires a public hearing with 15 days' notice, and then we'd conduct the public hearing, the commission can close the hearing, and then vote on the amendment on the same night. Assuming that you vote affirmatively for some language for an amendment, then it would go forward to the select board. And if you refer back to the memo written by Sue, you'll see that, to some extent, this issue has been instigated by discussion at the select board level, and that they're wanting this aspect of the issue to be finalized and resolved before they vote on amending chapter 11 of the town ordinances, which is to do with vending, vendors' activities in town.
Okay, so I have a question.
Okay.
It seems that you have two different definitions, but there's really no distinction between the two in the zoning language.
Okay, so what is the-
Food cart and mobile food unit.
One's motorized, one isn't.
Yeah, and so about the motorized, you know, the mobile one, this isn't gonna be something that's gonna be, in essence, idling. I mean, would it be permitted to be idling or otherwise, like refrigerated and like-
No, they typically, if they don't have access to mains power, run a small generator, and for financial, you know, for economic reasons more than anything else. The, the key distinction between a so-called mobile food unit and MFU and a food cart is, a food cart is something that you can push or pull by hand, and-
Like a hot dog.
Like a hot dog stand, so a pedestrian-level thing, whereas a mobile food unit is either Whereas a mobile food unit is either a trailer, or a van, or truck.
Like a Nons.
Right, so, and then the other one is, that's, you know, pretty obvious, is the new, relatively new, it's, I guess this is the second season for.
The one by Peter Hayden.
No, that's another trailer, that's, that's known, but there's another one on Putney Road called Steve's Jamaican.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Right.
Up at the mobile station.
And then there's, no. And then there's one, there's the Thai one at the mobile gas station, so they are both, you know, road vehicles, they're both kind of.
And they're all entirely within private property.
Yes. So to be really clear, um, the current code of ordinances controls, um, and issues licenses for vendors who are located on public property. But there's no control of vendor, of vendors, of, you know, sellers of food on private property. And there's a gap in the zoning ordinance where a mobile food unit or a food cart is not controlled under the zoning ordinance, either for somewhat obvious reasons. We generally don't control vehicles, and one way of looking at them is that they're out-of-fact vehicles. So, the issue arises though, when they're sort of, when they have a, a semi-permanent location. So that they're not fixed, but they're found at the same site for long periods of time, so they operate day-to-day in the same location. Then there are zoning issues to be considered, including access and site plan and pedestrian safety and those kinds of concerns. And then, to some extent, depending on the size of the parcel, it could be a question of the number of these types of units and their presence. Creating, you know.
So.
There could be health and safety.
Well, that's, that's for a different department to deal with.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would say the safety issues that we'd be concerned about are circulation and traffic.
Access.
Access.
Well, this doesn't say that there can't be, you know, eighty-five in one block, like this doesn't specify a, a number.
No, uh, you generally get one accessory use, and so the zoning permit is pinned to the owner of the property. So if you're Hanaford, the owner of the Hanafords parking, you know, you're, if you're the owner of the Hanafords Plaza, and I'm using that explicitly because no one uses it to vend food from right now. They couldn't encourage, you know, six people to set up food trucks and say, six, six is good, we would say, no, you get one. And there are other towns and other communities where the layout is somewhat different, and they might permit more than one vehicle in a parking lot. For instance, think of a really big ball field or a stadium, and then think of a parking lot that's over the road from it and is not actually owned by or part of the stadium or, or performance venue. And you, and the owner of that parking lot leases out space to hot dog trucks, right? And there's enough business to have six hot dog trucks, but only when there's a performance on or an event on at the stadium. That's the kind of setting where you'll see different.
Well, wouldn't it still just be one accessory use because its primary use is parking lot?
Well, the Fourth of July falls into that category at the Memorial Park, wouldn't it?
That's different, and that's controlled because they are vendors and it's public land, and so that's controlled by other aspects of chapter eleven of the ordinances. So what I'd say there is, other communities, other, anyway, I'm basically talking about cities there, and they would, they would either define, you know, this, this six sites as one accessory use. You know, there's six, you know, enough room for six vehicles or something as accessory use, but they're still confronting the issues of circulation and safety and access and so forth to those six trailers or whatever. I guess what I'm trying to say is, the basic setting here is you get one accessory use for a property, and if a private property owner wants to have this as an accessory use, they have to sign the permit. And so that's the point of control there.
Do we, do we need overcontrolling? I mean, I personally think food carts bring a totally different dynamic to an area. Quite frankly, I think it's kind of fun.
Yeah, but they could be smelly or noisy or.
I don't think our issue is with, you know, I think as, I, I think our issue is that we want to regularize it, I don't think we're thinking, I mean, I share your view, I think, you know, I think that, you know, then there's lots of aspects of. You know, the temporary nature of food carts and mo, in mobile food units, that's fine. I think the question becomes. You know, the obligation would be on the property owner to show that they want more than one vehicle as part of that accessory use or something. I mean, they can always appeal a decision and go to the D I B and say, look, I'm Hanafords, I've got, I've got traffic lights, I've got two points, I've got two points of access, I've got this whole seventy car, parking, car parking space area that's basically empty two-thirds of the time, like, what's up with you guys? And, you know, under those conditions, the D I B could set aside the one accessory use per, per site.
I don't like the, we, we often say, well, they can always appeal, and we've said that several times when we go to make rules, and I don't think they should, they could always appeal is really a good policy. And, um, you know, because what, what we said is, so we are concerned about safety, and that's certainly our rule. And we said, you know, if it's a permanent fixture, you know, I don't see any reason why one unit per person's owning the land.
Yeah, hang on. It cannot be permanent, I mean, this is, I know this is going to be.
Well, it's, it's an important part of it though, right? Because if it's not permanent, should there still be?
It's permanent in the sense that it stays in the same place for the season.
Well, so, yeah, then maybe that, then maybe we need to look at more aspects than, you know, somebody plops something in a parking lot for two days, should we be doing that?
Well, if this could be in, in any zoning district, like, let's say, next door to me, you know.
Actually, I have an excellent parking lot for a food truck.
Do you have to?
Well, that's a great spot.
I think you may have to recuse yourself, um, so, let me, let me go.
I would like there to be a review.
Right.
You know, I would like there to be some sort of process.
Right.
Doesn't have to be cumbersome.
No.
Yeah, I.
I might even object.
Yeah, let me, let me.
I would like there to be a form by which I could object if I so chose.
Right.
Because I live in a residential district, I don't want, you know.
Okay, let me solve that problem for you. The way this language is drafted, you'll notice that it allows for a permit for a food cart or a mobile vending, mobile food unit, where restaurants are permitted.
Yeah, I did notice.
Oh, okay.
So, restaurants are permitted in urban center, rural commercial, commercial West River waterfront, northeast five and northeast six. It's conditional and.
Sorry, Jim.
Technically, I'm commercial, I'm R C, I don't know if R C allows restaurants, probably not, actually. R C is offices and that kind of.
Yeah, it's conditional in commercial office, village center, commercial industrial, and northeast recreational.
Even if I want to have a lemonade stand with cookies.
Yeah.
Well, I would think that a cart table is neither a food cart nor a mobile food unit.
That's true, a cart table is.
I could, you know, what if I put a piece of plywood on my fence and it becomes a table?
Yeah, but it's neither a food cart nor a mobile food unit.
Right.
What if I put a canopy on it?
You're gonna have to put wheels on it.
It'll be fine, if you, as long as you have wheels on it.
You're done.
So if I want to sell my lemonade from my wagon?
Let's try and stick to actually what the ordinance is about.
I'm just being a wise guy.
Right, so, so let's go back to the accessory structure thing. Well, it's actually an accessory use and an accessory structure, so I need to check the zoning ordinance. There is a limit in each, each accessory use that you can come up with, so you can be in a mixed-use development, so you could be somewhere where there are, say, apartments on the third floor, offices on the second, and retail on the first floor, and then a parking lot that's large enough. And then you could then go further and say, I'd like a permit for a food, you know, for a mobile food unit in the corner. And these, and that, you know, as long as the site plan review came back, you know, positively, that would all be permitted. I think the idea here is, is that the admin, the zoning administrator needs to review the permit application precisely to establish the kinds of things that are contained here. And so the intent is not necessarily to restrict the number of mobile food units that are in any one location, but to ensure that if there is a mobile food unit or more than one, um, that they meet the minimum requirements of the zoning ordinance. And I would say, for instance, if I happen to be the Thai guy at the mobile gas station, I'm hoping that he has the sense to have signed a lease that says, I'm the only guy. You know, if somebody wants, if, if they want hot, fast food, they're going to come to me, right? Because I'm the only guy that you're going to actually strike a lease with, because I'm paying you and I'm going to sell food here. But if you come back, if I come back next week and there's a guy on the other side selling hot dogs, like, you know, this is, I'm not going to pay you what I'm paying you now. So there's a, I mean, basically, I think we've, we've proceeded from the understanding that you have a property owner who's interested in maximizing the use of their site, and you have a, and you have a small, another small business operator. Who's well, you know, who's interested in, in operating their mobile food unit there. I think we've assumed kind of a one-for-one relationship there. If there was some other, you know, if there was some attribute that was different, um, then I'm sure that there's mechanisms for exploring that. But it would seem to me somewhat unlikely that you'd have any of the sites where they're currently located increasing the number. That being said, you know, if I walked into the Harmony Lot on some really nice Friday night and I found a Vietnamese food cart in one corner, and, you know, an ice cream cart in another, and, you know, a crepe maker in another corner, all outside. You know, and there was nice music playing and lots of fun things happening, I'd be totally, you know, that would be great, that would be a blast.
Would they have to get permits for that?
Like for during gallery walk?
They'd, yeah, and they'd get it, they'd get it either through the town manager's office if they're on public land, or, uh, through the zoning office for the one on private land.
So it's one on private land, just one.
On each, on each parcel of private land.
Right.
So to me, it feels like, so it is our duty to look out for the safety, but I also, for me, this feels like we are putting up barriers to entrepreneurship on a problem that we predict might happen at some point.
Which, which part of it?
If safety is our issue, let me finish.
Yeah.
If safety is our issue, for the current term, we can say, we can leave it up to the discretion of the police to deal with this. If, if there's too much set up and they feel like there's traffic problems or pedestrian problems or whatever that are causing safety issues, and let's not put up barriers to entry for entrepreneurs that we desperately need to come in and start setting some things up and see what happens.
Well, I think that what you said in the beginning, Jim, about planning for some of, you know, some event that might happen in the future, that's what planning is.
Totally.
And so we should be planning to protect the town and its inhabitants from, and, and by way of regulating. This feature, which is now slipping through the cracks and not being regulated, it's regulated on public land, but it's not regulated on private land. So it's just being, having a uniform policy.
Yeah, but if you're making it, I feel like this is making it a little bit more difficult for, um, for, just like Jim said, and it's not just the entrepreneurship, but I think it's also desirable to residents, given a certain area, and I don't know what those areas are, I think that's somewhat subjective. But I, I do think there's a, a benefit to it too.
Yeah.
And I, I feel like this may be over-regulating, or maybe we could get creative with the language that sort of allows people to have some options. Whether it's, um, date and time-based, or, um, maybe it has something to do with the, the frequency that they're allowed to be there, or maybe it's seasonal, or maybe it's based on district, I don't know what it is. But I think we should have that discussion, especially with James.
That, that sounds like it's getting more complicated than what I, what I'm sensing the intent of this is, is just to extend the same permitting process that goes to food carts and mobile food units that are on public space. To just extend it to privates, include private space, and just to be aware of whatever zoning laws are in, in.
I mean, what it says is you have to have trash receptacles, I mean, you couldn't object to trash receptacles.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's seven or eight items here that are really explicit, uh, let me, let me maybe just.
Three of them are permits.
Right.
Business permit, zoning permit, and.
Well, this is, this would be the zoning permit.
Yeah, and.
And then the health department.
Right.
Health department, and then also a written thing from the owner of the property.
Well, let's, yeah, let's go back to that, so let's just review the items one through eight. Five is, um, required already, so you can't get a zoning permit unless the property owner signs the permit application.
Which just means you can't be a squatter.
Right, so there is, you know, and this.
That's for anybody, whether public or private?
Yeah.
Land?
Yeah, you can't, you can't get a zoning permit without the property owner signing off on the permit application, so let me put it in this way, sometimes, an owner of a property who's proceeding to sell it. Will sign off on a permit application to the buyer, and the sale is contingent on the buyer getting the zoning permit that they want if they want to change their use or something. So if I've got a gas station and somebody wants to come along and turn it into a restaurant, I'll say, yeah, sure, knock yourself out. I tell you what, if you get the permit from the zoning, from, from the D I B to turn this from a gas station into a restaurant, it's yours, I'll sell it to you. And the buyer says, I don't want to, I don't want to buy it until I know for sure I can get the zoning permit, and they go, yeah, okay, so go get the zoning permit, and then we've got a deal. So the purchase and sale just reads contingent on the obtaining of a, you know, obtaining a zoning permit, it's, it'll go through. So, in this instance, I'm, I've got a food truck, I want to sell udon noodles, I'm going to have to get the owner of the parking lot that I want to park in to sign the zoning permit to even start. That's pretty standard, so we would drop, I would, I would recommend that we, that we eliminate item number five because it's there already. Item number eight, if you're in the business of, um, selling food from a mobile food unit or a food cart in the state of Vermont, you're required to have a health department license to do that. There are certain criteria that you have to meet.
Yeah.
Concerning, and obviously they're a little different between a food cart and a mobile food unit, but if you've got a mobile food, food unit, for instance, you're still required to have a sink that's separate from, you have a sink for doing the dishes and preparing food in, and then you have to have a separate sink for washing your hands in, the water has to be of a certain temperature, the tank has to be a certain minimum size.
Yeah.
It has to be a roadworthy and registered and insured vehicle so that it can be moved if it needs to be, and there's a variety of other things. Some of those things, you know, I don't know all the requirements of the health department license, uh, you know.
Yeah.
But it's an expectation that you have that, and it's a requirement that you have that. One of the concerns that the town has at the global level is that they don't, they want to make sure, as far as practical, that somebody that sets up a mobile food unit or a food cart in town has the appropriate licenses and, um, permits in place. In the instance that a customer has an issue with consuming food from that location, and the, the town either inadvertently shares liability because they're, you know, they should have been, there should have been some aspect of their operation that was reviewed and so forth. So it's a unfortunate but necessary legal measure that has to be taken around the risks of retailing food, right? So that, what I'd say about item number eight is that, for these people to operate legitimately, they're going to have to have the things that are suggested in, in number eight. And so we would look to probably delete that also from the language.
Well, isn't it a nice reminder for someone who's going to be opening up?
Yeah, I think it's okay as a reminder, you know, and, you know, um, and that's okay, I mean, it could stay, I mean, it works as a reminder. So the things that are not covered here that we think could be considered are, it doesn't address the time, the hours of operation of any one of these sites. And so that gets back to the nuisance and impact on surrounding uses. And then the other thing is, that list of, um. Zoning districts where restaurants are permitted currently does not include industrial, and we feel, we don't quite understand the history of.
Oh, yeah, it makes sense to have a food cart in an industrial site.
Yeah, sure.
Right, and so we don't quite understand why restaurants are not a permitted use in industrial districts, but they're not. And so what we would say is that, as part of the amendment package, if you like, going forward, we would want to include restaurants being a permitted use in industrial districts. we would wanna include restaurants being a permitted use in industrial districts. And so then a food cart could be located somewhere like a parking lot for a factory or the book press, or, you know, there's a bunch of sites in town where it would open that up.
How does, um, work sites that have a cafeteria in there, is that the same thing as a restaurant?
No. I mean, they have to meet, I shouldn't say that so emphatically. I'm sure they have to meet certain health department requirements.
But this is as only.
But this is, but that's separate from this.
That's separate, okay.
Yeah.
I mean, like, thinking like, well, hospitals different, but Vermont Yankee has their own food cafeteria.
Right. Well, Learning has a cafeteria.
Yeah.
You know, they are obligated to meet health department requirements. So it's just, but that's not anything that we're involved with.
Yeah, okay.
Um, the more, I s, I think the sort of the more germane issue here to some extent is what is the existing regulatory framework for retailing food in this way? And, you know, what are the issues concerned with it? And why the town is moving to amend chapter 11 so that there is more control?
So do we have the answer to that?
Yeah, basically, there's been a prolifer, proliferation on private land of these, of these mostly mobile food units. And so, um.
Have there been complaints or anything? Is that what tripped this up?
None, no complaints have come to the zoning office. Um, but, you know, we think.
Or question complaints, I guess, isn't the right word, just questions or concerns.
There's plenty of scope, there's plenty of scope for, for conflict. And you, so if you look at this list then, once you've dealt with the items that I just drew your attention to, it's the basic, very basic site plan requirements concerning not interfering with the setbacks, um, not being on a public right-of-way, that it's entirely located on private property, as is the site furniture, um, that any temporary site furniture has to be located within the parking areas as long as, or it can be located in parking areas as long as it doesn't interfere with pedestrian or vehicular access and does not create a visibility obstruction to moving vehicles within a parking lot. Um, and then the other items are, deal with trash or receptacles and picking up of trash. Um, and then signs, which actually has come up as an issue.
Yeah, sure.
With, with, uh, mobile food units. And so.
Also lighting, I mean, if people's hours of operation go into the dark.
That would go back to the question of hours of operation, I guess. And so I guess what I wanna also alert you to is, um, and I'll use a different town as an example. It's pretty famous, um, the barbecue joint in Putney, whatever it's called.
Oh, Curtis.
Curtis's barbecue. Right, okay. So Curtis's is, you know, comprises two early sixties-era school buses parked end on end with, um, I guess landscaping, you could call it, around it, which enables shorter people to sort of get their chin up to the window so that they can order. Um, there obviously started off in life as school buses that were then converted to mobile food units. They're clearly not roadworthy, they're clearly not registered, they're clearly not insured, and they're not gonna move anytime soon under their own power. And so he's been able to remain there somewhat due to providing, you know, covered areas for people to eat and, you know, it's kind of grandfathered in. But if you think about, if you were trying to operate a similar kind of restaurant some distance away, and you're required to maintain a building with bathrooms and windows and, you know, a whole bunch of other things, you're like, hey, what's going on? This guy's basically able to sell however many meals a week and doesn't have to provide access to a bathroom or all the other things that you're requiring me to. Um, what's with the different regulatory, you know, setting?
Barbecue's better?
Well, I don't think that's the answer, but, um, so I think that one of the things that this sort of pushes back on, and, you know, one of the areas of concern that we have to balance off is, at some point, people who've made a different level of commitment to a different kind of a business and, you know, and is implied in a different level of service, like you can sit down, it's out of the weather, you have access to a bathroom.
They pay property taxes.
They pay property taxes, they pay.
Well, somebody pays the property taxes, is what that guy is, right?
Um, I think that you could maybe hope for them not going up as fast as you'd otherwise expect. So, um, so I think.
Well, it's a matter of competition.
Right.
You know, for the people who bother to open up a restaurant, which is a difficult thing to do.
Right.
On, on the other hand, I mean, if we're gonna stick with that barbecue place example, the fact that there weren't regulations allowed a cool, interesting piece of Putney to exist that with the regulations would no longer exist, or that couldn't exist in the future state.
Right, and that's okay, but there are consequences that could come from the proliferation of those things.
Sure, yes, that's also true.
And so, and so the question here is, what and how do you wanna control it? And, you know, there is a nationwide kind of spurt of interest in, you know, the whole kind of food truck world, and, you know, I don't think anyone here is trying to mark out Bredalboro, Bredalboro as a no-go area.
Of course not.
But the question comes, you know, what are the implications of something slowly slipping from temporary and mobile into very permanent and fixed? And then what are the implications of that? And, you know, I'm sure Curtis's is regarded widely as a pretty fun destination, but I'm sure that there's another part of the population that probably regards it as an eyesore. And, you know, without wanting to go into too many details, there's plenty of neighbors who, at points in the past, have complained about the impact.
Whereas Top of the Hill Grill does have bathrooms.
Right, exactly. And Top of the Hill Grill is an example of something that started off basically as a trailer and then slowly transformed into a more permanent setting and does have bathrooms and other facilities.
Where's his bathrooms? In the main building?
In that little red building that used to be a veterinary office.
The old TSA or whatever it was, the old radio station building.
Right. And then, yeah, for a while it was a veterinary office, so, yeah. So, I mean, it's, you know, and all, all the things associated with, and it's still a seasonal restaurant.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, um.
So, um, do we wanna have more discussion on this? Do we wanna vote on this now? Do we wanna wait until we have more members to vote on?
I'd like to make a motion to vote on this, subtracting items number five and eight.
I think we should think about this a little bit more. I mean, this is, it's, it's interesting, but I just.
Let me say, you don't have to vote on the language right now. What you could do is simply establish, well, let me think about this. You do have to vote on some language to go forward for consideration for the June 24th public hearing. So basically.
What's the June 24th public hearing of?
Okay, right.
If this were to pass.
If this were to pass.
A public hearing would be necessary.
Right, so, right.
Oh, so even if we passed this?
It gets considered at the public hearing.
Got it.
Right? And so you could, and I'm encouraging you to select June 24th as the date for that public hearing.
Okay.
We don't think it's necessarily gonna attract a huge amount of public input, but there could be some stakeholders that wanna express their views.
Right.
So.
And you also said there's some pieces missing there, so that.
Well, I think that the questions that we had for you to consider were expanding the list of, um, zoning districts where.
Like industrial.
Like where a restaurant could be permitted, so do include industrial in there. And then the other is, there's no issue of hours of operation. Um, and then, um, so you could, you know, tonight, you could make a decision to include industrial and include, and include, you know, one of the, an item that addresses hours of operation. You could exclude item number five. I actually agree with, um, Liz on item number eight.
I also think that item number five, I mean, if you don't have writing from the property owner permission, then you're, you're squatting.
Right.
Yeah, but they're gonna have to get the property, what I'd say there is, is that the zoning permit application form has to have the property owner's signature on it, and if they came in and forged it, then that would be one set of consequences for them. And if they came in, come in and leave it blank, then it's not complete, and we just say, hmm, you need that.
So that's in their, it's in their application anyways.
We don't accept, we don't accept applications without the property owner signing it. So we just deem it incomplete, which just pushes them back to go get the property owner's signature. Is that, is that enough, or do you want, do you wanna leave?
That's fine with me.
No, that's.
Okay. So that's, that's the immediate, I mean, when we pick up the form, that's the first thing we look at, we go, oh, um, is this your property? Well, no, actually. It seems to be blank. Oh, yeah, I meant to bring it up.
Yeah, I mean, some people get verbal permission but not written, so there's the difference.
Yeah, they need to get it written. They need, they need to get it signed.
Number five may not be an item in this ordinance, but it's already on the form.
Yes, you can't, you can't get the form.
Nobody can do nothing without the property owner's.
You got it.
But is it, rather than eliminating these, is it just useful to have them? I mean, even though it's a little redundant, just as reminders?
Five is really redundant.
Oh, okay.
Um, eight, I think you can make an argument that it's a good reminder.
Yeah.
Um, but five is, and it's, five is important in a different way. The permit is being issued to the property owner. A copy of the permit is gonna be, you know, on the dashboard or attached to the trailer or something in some way, so that if anyone asks the operator of the mobile food unit, you got a zoning permit, they go, yeah, here it is. But it's the property owner's zoning permit, it's, because it's their property. And so when we, when we, if we were to take a violation action against somebody with a mobile food unit, we'd be taking action against the property owner. That's who we'd serve the violation notice to, not the operator of the mobile food unit, because it's their permit that's been, you know, that's where the infraction is. And so what we're doing there also is stating to the property owner, you have a requirement to control the behavior and activities of the person who's leasing this site from you. So if there's a sign infraction, or the trash is balling around, or there's a proliferation, proliferation of kiddie pools, as well as, um, you know, picnic tables for kids to play in or something, and that's not.
So many dogs hanging around, getting rid of trash.
Right, all that kind of stuff, then it's a question for the property owner to, to, to make sure that they're in conformance with his zoning permit.
I have a process question.
Yep.
So if we, let's say that we like this, or we change the language, we like it, and there's community input. So is the community input for us to then decide if we wanna change what we voted on?
What you need to give them is a little bit like, you know, it'll be draft language. So you're sending, so the draft language would be available in the office for review.
Mm-hmm.
Right? And so it's a step, like a zone, standard zoning amendment, and.
It goes to the select board for their approval after we.
Well, yeah, so there's two steps. It goes to, the planning commission holds a public hearing.
Yeah.
You take public feedback, you can amend the language at that point, right? And then send it on to the select board. The select board has to hold their own public hearing. They can amend the language further, or dump it, or do whatever, or start over.
I see.
By then, summer's over and.
Yeah, the food cart, and then the food cart problem's gone away.
Till next year.
We'd like to, I mean, which is why. It's very difficult to navigate piles of snow and parking lots just to get your hands on something from, you know, the food cart. Um, and it gets really cold standing on one of those things for eight hours at a time, hoping that some, somebody's gonna come by and buy something. Um.
Have you ever seen Winter City's Institute? Have you ever gone to that website?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, a decent food cart is gonna have windows that open and close, just like a takeout restaurant. You could certainly be in one of those. Anyhow.
Like an ice fishing hut, it's on heat.
Yeah.
Exactly. I mean, you gotta store it there, it's gonna be hot in there.
Meadow is that public property that belongs to the.
It is.
Belongs to the chief.
Retreat Meadow, where's that?
Firehouse.
At the window. Okay, so, um.
Oh, I don't.
So the select board has asked the planning office to do this?
Yeah, and so I think, you know, summer is looking away. We would like to get this handled, you know, as quickly as we can, partly because, you know, the issue is upon us, or, you know. But, um, now, like I said, you know, back in the beginning, this has sort of come to us as a consequence of the board reviewing their own section of the ordinance, and a decision has been made by them to seek the planning commission's assistance by framing something that would require a zoning permit for mobile food units and food carts on private property.
Because that's a logical place to.
That's the place to locate it in the ordinance, yeah.
But anyone like to make a motion?
I motion we vote on it, removing items five and eight.
Okay, um, all in favor? So have we had enough discussion?
I'm not gonna vote for it, 'cause I think item eight should be included, so I'm gonna vote the, the amendment or whatever is down, and then create a new one.
All right. All in favor of the?
So, hang on, who seconded it, sorry?
Nobody.
Nobody seconded it. Oh my God, you're gonna lose, Jim. You have to have someone second it. It's all right.
I'm okay to lose. I don't mind.
Okay, how about another motion?
Okay, scratch that one. Anybody would like to move a different motion?
I don't know how to word it, just whatever he said, but leaving out item five only.
Okay, so it would just read, you move.
To amend the language to, to be this.
Well, no, why don't we say something like, you move to forward this language for consideration in a public hearing, with the exception of eliminating item number five.
For mobile food vendors.
Right.
Yes, all right. I move that we forward to a public hearing the definitions and the language to be added to article four of the zoning ordinance, section five, one, eight, eight, as written here, minus number five.
Anyone like to second that? I'll second that.
Can the chair second?
Can I second?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All not in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the board is split, and therefore the motion does not carry.
Okay.
Well, we can bring this up next month if you'd like, we have more members, have more discussion.
Um, I'm just sort of going through the calendar in my head. So fifteen days back from June 24th is.
Calendar days or workdays?
Calendar days. So the first meeting in June is on the third, is that correct?
No, the tenth.
Tenth.
The tenth.
Yeah, there's not enough room between the 10th and the 24th, which means it would need to be done on July 1st.
Eight.
July 8th. Yeah.
And then the public hearing would be August 8th, or August, basically the first.
No.
Meeting in August.
July 8th.
July 8th.
No, because of the morning. You have to get enough notice, so if we, if we bring it up and get it the next meeting, it won't be in time for June 24th. It'll be in time to have the public hearing on July 8th.
Oh, the public hearing, oh, I see.
Got it. Obviously, the select board wants this dealt with in a timely manner.
Yeah, and given that we missed.
Grappling.
Yeah, and we missed the last meeting, which was, so we're already kinda.
We're behind already, and it puts it a whole month behind.
Yeah, and we're already probably attracting more attention than we need to because of that. Um.
Well, is what it is, I guess, though.
What's next?
Well, before we go on, can I get guidance from the commission as to what you would need to see from staff at the next meeting that would facilitate a resolution?
What do you guys need?
I don't know, I, I need to, I'm not comfortable with the, as I see it right now, I feel like it's... I haven't had time to think about it, but I feel like it's super, it's, it's controlling, it's limiting. Maybe I'll change my opinion once I read it some more, I don't know. Number three, um, again, I'd have to read the wording again, but to me, it's the, the safety issue makes sense. But on the other hand, you're gonna put it in a parking lot, so you're probably gonna be taking up spaces. So... But, you know...
It's just asking that it not interfere, though.
Yeah, so let's take, let's take, let's take a, let's take an example of...
I can't understand what you're saying.
Let's take an example of a site and work it through, so...
So here's a thought. The, what gets brought is basically what's in number three. Permits are not required, and the police, at their discretion, can make a judgment on number three and shut them down if those issues are not met, otherwise they can operate.
Here's the point, here's the issue. If you're gonna regulate something like this, you start, the, in terms, this is a process point, I think it may, it may help both of you. When you go driving along the road, you could take the view that you could drive any speed you want, as long as it's safe. Or you can take the view that you have to obey the road signs. And you may have deep disagreement that this is, that thirty-five miles an hour is an appropriate speed limit for this piece of road. You can discuss that first with the police officer, and then subsequently with the judge, right? That, that's open to you every time. But the deal is, when you take your license and then take your car keys, if you're a licensed driver, implicit in that is, is that you're gonna obey by the rules of the road, which means that if you see a road sign that says, "Speed limit thirty-five," you're gonna keep to it. So you're already in this situation of having to explain to someone why you're not keeping to thirty-five miles an hour as a speed limit. So there's a, there's a rule, and a rationale for the rule, and then there's a conversation about the fact that you just appear to have broken it. And then you have the right of appeal, after you've done whatever you've done to the police officer. And then you can go to the judge, and then you can get a resolution. So in, in land use, we control land use. And what we say by controlling land use is that we write a zoning ordinance, and we say, these are the things you can do. These are the things you can do under certain circumstances. These are the things that you definitely cannot do. And then you've got these mechanisms of appeal and amendment open to you from the very beginning. So if you buy property or conduct a business, and you want to be legitimate, you, ignorance is no defense before the law. So you have to obtain information from your friends and from, from public officials as to what regulations you're required to adhere to. And so then you say, okay, I think I need some permits if I'm gonna sell some food. For instance, I wouldn't wanna be accused of being a fly-by-night hot dog stand operator, and people becoming ill and dying as a consequence of me not adhering to some basic public hygiene things, and even some safety things about children not getting run over in a parking lot. So I'm gonna do the right thing, I'm gonna think about this, and I'm gonna get the, each one of these steps addressed. And so what we're doing here is saying, you come to the zoning department, and you show a plan that says, here's my van, here's two tables with umbrellas, and I'm gonna cordon off these six parking spaces, and have a rope and, you know, some things to hold up the rope. So people are gonna be very clearly aware that they can't just drive through here at thirty-five miles an hour. This is like where I'm gonna seat my customers. And I'm not gonna be in the way, I'm not gonna be in a drive aisle. I'm not gonna be sharing a drive aisle in the parking lot with eighteen-wheelers with my food stand. I'm gonna keep it out of the way, and all that kind of stuff. So the obligation is on the applicant to show that they've thought about all the potential conflicts that we identify here. And then they're gonna, then they're gonna also comply with requirements to do with trash and receptacles, and then signs. So what we're doing is exactly the same thing as the speed limit deal. You wanna have a business, and you wanna be legitimate, you have to submit a plan that shows that you're understanding what the requirements are. Then we give it to you, no problems, it's fifty bucks. Then you go away and you've got it. Then somebody calls and complains and says, my toddler just got run over by an eighteen-wheeler while I was trying to get a hot dog. And the reason why is, it's all messed up, and the guy's like parked in the middle of a drive aisle, not in a parking space. And then we've got a basis for violation action. Right? So that's, so in other words, you have, what I'm trying to get at here is you have to set up some kind of framework at the beginning, and then you have to allow for amendment and appeal, and, and, you know, specific conditions. And all this does is lay out in a very minimal way the requirements of the applicant to say, yeah, I've thought about this, and I'm putting my van here, not here, because this is in the corner and it's safe and it's out of the way, and this is where people are gonna park, and this is where my sign is gonna go, and it's not gonna block people's view of the intersection, and so on and so forth, because these are the things I have to think about. That's all this does.
I understand, geez, that was a long answer. Look, I, I understand, all I wanna do is read this over and think about it. I haven't, I haven't gotten a chance to, to go through all of this yet, and I, there are some things that I'm not sure...
I don't understand what's so hard about reading this, we've had this for a month, actually, already technically. Um, and I can't say that I spent a lot of time reading it ahead of time, but that's what our job is as commissioners, is to read the packet ahead of time before we come here.
You know what? We, we voted, and Rod asked what would be satisfactory that he could take back to his office. I said what I thought would be satisfactory. If anybody else wants to say what they think would be satisfactory, that's fine, too. But I understand everything you're saying, and I think the unintended consequence is reducing entrepreneurship and reducing creativity, and, you know, that's where I stand on it, so.
I'll make a list of questions, and get back to you tomorrow, or Friday, or whatever. And maybe that can, I'll send them to everyone. But I just, I mean, you know, having the, the process of specifically only having one accessory use...
I can confirm that, I mean, I would say that that is such an unlikely circumstance. It just is on the basis of the sites that we've got available, and where this is likely to take place.
Harmony Lot, I mean...
Well, I think in a food cart setting like that, the one that's currently operating is on private property. That's almost the entire extent of the open space that's privately held in that lot that's not already... And it's, and it's parking spaces that are cordoned off. So that property line that you, that's formed by the, that, that wooden railing there, that people, that cars nose up to the park, is basically a boundary line between what is the property of the Brooks House, and what is public. So it's conceivable that you could get another one in there, and, you know, I think under the right circumstances, that, that might fly. But what I'm trying to get at is that there is ultimately a limit to the number of accessory uses and structures that you can put on a property. And the review is, hey, listen, you know, one might work, two, maybe, three, five, you know, this...
And the town call, or they go to the...
It's the zoning administrator's call. Right, and then they have the right to appeal to the D I B. And it would be on the basis of, I see a conflict here. Not because, not I'm aggrieved because, you know, you've already got one, but I see a conflict here between traffic and pedestrians, or sightlines for drivers, or there'll be some...
Not enough parking.
There'd be some technical issue that would make it clear that the zoning administrator feels that there's a conflict. In accordance with these things that are identified here, which is why I was going through this, it's like, I really want this aspect of the ordinance, because it's similar to others, to be really clear. And that is, it's a framework for which, against which an administrative officer, in this case, the zoning administrator, has to make reasoned decisions and be able to, you know, justify their decision. And so they can't, they can't do it without something like this, and we can't expect an applicant to submit something without something like this. And so the, the, kind of the obligation on us when we're drafting this kind of law is to make it really clear. And then protect and hold out that, look, if you, if you don't like the decision, you've got the right to appeal. But it has to have this kind of clarity, which I'm sure, under the right circumstances, reads really as, as restrictive, but it's, that's, you know, these are the rules, these are the rules. And so it's like, okay, respond to the rules.
Is this any different than people who wanna set up a food cart or a mobile food unit on public land? I mean, my understanding is that they have to go through the same stuff.
The, exactly the same things, interference with traffic, interference with pedestrian ways, you know, is it gonna cause a conflict? Is the noise and smell and busyness associated with the activity gonna interfere with others?
So the only difference is that this is now wanting to be applied to private...
Private property.
Private property.
Right.
To clarify...
Right.
Whatever, and then it happens to fall under accessory use, or whatever, that's, that's the clincher here.
Right, and I'm...
Not saying you can't do this, it's just taking the same regs that apply if you're putting your food cart on... I don't know, where's one that's on public, I mean, on the part of Harmony Lot that the town owns? Does the town, town...
Yes, the town owns...
So the town already has this public process.
Right.
And the select board asked us to put it into the zoning ordinance, because that's essentially the way you deal with private property and the police power. And you have the police power to shut something down if it's not safe on public land. But this is the mechanism for which the police can come shut you down if you're on private.
Right, and what it's...
If you're unsafe.
Right.
It's not saying you can't do it, it's just saying if you're unsafe for some reason.
My suggestion is that if it was presented...
The only thing that needs to safety is number three.
Six? Six does?
Six.
Six and seven?
Two?
Two.
Two.
They all do.
And the other, and the other ones that are requirements to do with if you're gonna run a business in Brattleboro, you need a business permit? Or a vendor's license?
Procedural kind of thing. To me, it was confusing why it was brought up, but now that I understand it, that it is, as I just said, that there, there's some requirements already in place on public land for food carts, and the select board has asked us to extend that to food carts on private property. If it had been, been presented to me in that way, I would've got it really quickly right away. And that would've streamlined the whole process, I think, and then we could've responded in that way. And for me, that would've been very helpful, rather than...
So you can think of this as matching language to the language that's already in chapter eleven that addresses the issue of this kind of activity on public land.
Yeah. It's just getting to the laser thing of what it is, rather than, and I know you like to talk around it, and, and...
No, I think the memo says that right up the front.
So again, going back to, I, I think the, the major thing that I disapprove of is the amount of accessory uses, especially if they're temporary. If somebody wants to set up, if somebody has a giant parking lot that they're not using, and even if people aren't driving through it, can they set up four food carts?
If that was, if that was the application, then, you know, then that would be, I need to check how many... There's a technical aspect of the zoning ordinance that I need to confirm as to how many accessory uses you can have, right?
But it's, it's a couple of businesses, one use, no?
Well, I...
What if they're making lemonade here, and...
Right, exactly, you know, so, I, like I said, absent somebody like C N S with a huge parking lot that several acres in is saying, we want a hot dog here, stand here, and we want a burger joint at the other end. I'm like, you know, we've got two different exits, and they're half a mile apart, or whatever, that's fine, if there's not a conflict...
Well, there's a private park, there's a private lot downtown now, that's partially got a fence around it, it's owned by a private person, but what if somebody wanted to put three food carts on there? You know, that's, that's the, that's what you're talking about, and...
Is there anything here that says only one?
It doesn't say, this doesn't specify that there can only be one. I think there's an assumption in other parts of the zoning ordinance is what I'm getting at, that you're permitted a certain number of accessory uses. So that doesn't go to the question of how many mobile food units. So in other words, yes, you could define an accessory use as...
So that's really the clarification that Timberly's looking for.
Right, I, that's fine, I'd have that for the, you know, that can go forward to a public hearing.
And then the, the other thing about the setbacks, I mean, if you're in an urban, urban center, what's a setback in urban center?
I need to check, but if it's in downtown, it's basically zero for the front, and, um, like, it's five or ten feet for the sides. And on Putney Road, that area of Putney Road, I think it's twenty feet? Or twenty-five? Both from the sides and from the front. So in both instances that I can think of, both the Mobile Gas Station and America's Best, you know, they're well behind the setback line.
But what about like this lot that I'm thinking of downtown, I don't wanna say where, but say it's, it's stuck in between two buildings, and it fronts right up to the sidewalk on the street, and somebody wanted to use that, I mean, how does the setbacks...
I think it's zero, I think it's, it's either five feet or zero, it's minimal. So, you know, five feet is...
And you wouldn't be impacting travel in any way unless the people blocked the sidewalk, and you'd set it up in the way so that it wouldn't block the sidewalk.
Right, so that'd be, and that'd be exactly the sort of thing that the zoning administrator would review, that, you know, the orientation of the vehicle would be such that people who were standing in line to get their food wouldn't be standing on the sidewalk, that kind of stuff. It's that, I mean, it's really, I know it reads in a sort of much more authoritarian mode or something, but that is basically what we're looking at. This is the, that is, this is the language that would exact, allow the zoning administrator to make that determination exactly. Oh, show me which side you're gonna vend the food from, like, okay, which side is the window on? Where is the van in relation to the street, or the sidewalk, or whatever it is? Have you thought of putting it over here? You know, and, you know, there could be constraints, like, that's the power outlet, outlet that I wanna use so that I can use, you know, mains power and not run my generator.
So the reason we're still...
And I have to be here, not there, okay?
Talking about this is because, I mean, we did vote, and it's basically done, but I can tell that you have a concern, because the select board seems brought this to you, and we're gonna end up not doing it in exactly a timely manner, that might be to their satisfaction, but I think it, it is what it is, and, and if, you know, we're gonna bring it up at another meeting, it's just gonna push it back, you know, for further discussion, and give you time to read and have more?
I mean, I, there's just stuff that, that seems a little...
You can tell the select board that we, we couldn't recommend it, but we're considering it.
And if they don't like it?
Yeah.
That's right, how it goes.
They have the right to unseat us.
Oh, my. Careful, my seat's up, I'm re-upping here.
Uh...
Un-re-upped.
Yeah, okay.
We've put you in a, in a compromised position, we understand. Or whatever.
It's embarrassing, and I think, I think we all share in that. So let's move on.
All right.
I'm sorry if you're embarrassed.
You know, it's less than a page of text. I mean, what's a page of text I don't like?
Yeah, I mean, I...
I mean, I'm proud, I'm not embarrassed.
I, no, I, I want clarification on specifically the number of vendors, because I feel like that's incredibly limiting. And I agree with Jim's comment about the entrepreneurship, and...
But that isn't, that's only implied, it's not actually specific in that language, and you're asking for that...
We can resolve, we could resolve the issue about the number of vehicles that would be permitted, and have an explanation of that available for the public hearing. If you, I mean, part of my problem here logically, to be really honest, is Jim's motion voted for the exclusion of five and eight, but the rest of the text was okay. That got voted down. Carolina's motion was drop five, leave in eight, and that got voted down. The reason that...
Tied.
Tied. The reason... You know, so there's such little difference between one side and the other, and it's the remaining text that actually seems to provide the most concern for you two, which is not the same as the motion that Jim made. So I'm having a hard time following exactly how to resolve the differences here. So if I'm to prepare alternate language, or to prepare more background material for the next meeting, I'm no clearer on what the differences between the various commissioners are on the basis that more than eighty percent of the texts in front of you, at least three of you have agreed to tonight. So it's just...
I didn't vote, Jim voted, I didn't vote.
Right.
Nobody voted on his motion.
That's true.
'Cause there was no second.
There was no second, so it didn't get a second.
But would you have, I guess the question to me would be...
What's the valid zoning permit on number four, what is that?
The permit that they're applying, that they, that they, that they can't operate without a valid zoning permit, and this is the section under which they'd be applying for a zoning permit. for a zoning permit.
And anybody who wants to have a, a mobile food cart, whether it's public or private, has to have that.
So you turn up in town with your hot dog truck and you start selling hot dogs from the front of some guy's gas station and you don't have a zoning permit, then we go up to you and say, got your zoning permit? You go, what zoning permit? And you go, ah, you need a zoning permit. Right? That's what number four means.
And you do that whether it's on private land or public land?
Well, they don't need a zoning permit on public land, but they definitely need a zoning permit on, on private land, which is what this section is addressing.
But they need some kind of permission on public land, like if they were gonna-
Yes, they do, they would need a different, they would, they would need a vendor's license.
Similar.
Similar but different.
Yeah, like if they were gonna set up on the common, say, for instance.
Right, they'd be getting it from the town manager's office and it would be reviewed by the police.
Oh, I see.
The police chief and the fire chief.
So if it's on private property, it's just a different, so it isn't quite exactly the same.
But it's, it's just an extension of, you know, the power to zone. You either believe that the town has the power to zone or you don't.
Would you have voted for your, your motion?
Would I have voted for my motion? Um-
Or were you gonna vote it, did you just make it for procedural purposes and we're gonna vote it down anyways?
I was more in that camp.
That's what I, okay, that's what I thought. So it's not the difference in the two motions, it's-
One other wording issue that I have with 3A, it says, um, all right, the food cart or mobile food unit and any associated temporary side furniture may be located within parking areas provided it do not interfere with pedestrian or vehicle access or parking. That makes it sound like leave the parking spots and the extra whatever you're leaving at the end. That, that to me is how that reads.
What it's, what it means in my mind and the way it's written is you wouldn't locate your activity in such a way that it would prevent people from accessing the rest of the parking lot.
The remaining parking.
The remaining parking.
Okay.
So it's implicit that you're gonna occupy some parking spaces to do it because it's in a parking lot.
Okay.
But you're not gonna be impeding the business.
So if we added the word remaining, would you feel more comfortable with the language?
Or adjacent parking?
So you're objected to doors that say, this door must remain closed, because I always have a hard time with that. If it says, this door must remain closed, how do you open it? How do you get through? But what they really mean to say is-
Close it after you opened it.
Close this door, you know, when you're not using it.
Right.
Very subtle, but, but, yes, very different.
Right, it means something quite different. So if you want, I mean, that's a good clarification, we could add remaining. In my mind, reading it, what it immediately refers to is that you're not blocking access to the other parking spaces. It's assumed that you're gonna take up some parking spaces, you're gonna be parked somewhere and you're in a parking lot. Because you're a truck, right?
Obviously, the property owner is giving you that permission as long as you don't impede, would that be the right word?
Yep.
Of their business or their, their clientele accessing-
Or the safety of the parking lot.
Right, right. And that's the issue that we're driving at here. And not everybody that owns private property or operates a food van is necessarily very thoughtful about these kinds of matters. And that's exactly how you end up with these kinds of requirements, right? It's like, have you thought of? And the answer is frequently, no. Um, so-
Oh, well, people just need to see my food cart.
So, okay, so is there, is there an amendment you could make to that sentence that would resolve your concern?
Well, the adjacent or remaining parking, but again, I wanna, I, I wanna understand what the amount of, um, how many carts or other uses. I mean, I, that's, I, I, I'm confused about that.
We can resolve that, the explicit number of, you know, how far does the accessory use go? Turn it around, turn it around-
There's nothing in this language here.
Right, there's nothing in this language that goes to the number of accessory uses you can have on a property or whether this constitutes the one and only accessory use you can have or any, any of that stuff. So the concern that the zoning administrator has is not you can only have one, it's that it, it meets these requirements about pedestrian and vehicular-
Yes.
-access and safety. I can resolve whether there's some language in some other part of the zoning ordinance that restricts the number of accessory uses. And there are ways in which the number of accessory uses does end up becoming a concern. So if this is one accessory use, I think it opens the possibility that you could have more than one vehicle conducting business as an accessory use, right? But there are reasons why the zoning ordinance does want to address accessory use for obvious reasons to do with the, um, relationship between that accessory use and the list of permitted and conditional uses that are allowed in the zoning district.
Yeah.
Right?
But if they're temporary, how does that, where does that language-
Well, that's one of the issues, that's one of the issues-
Seasonal, temporary.
That's one of the issues that, that's one of the reasons why we want to do this. Number one, it's seasonal, and number two, you know, that's, that's, that's a valid question. Well, I don't think this goes to the, you know, I don't think there's any language here that conflicts with the rest of the ordinance. And I, you know, I'd need to just confirm at this point what the accessory use question is.
Sounds like we still don't have the language there because we don't have the hours of operation and we don't have the, the-
Did you-
Industrial stuff that we, you talked about was missing.
Well-
And, and so I think that those things need to be incorporated in. And this is, I guess, just as much as there's some time concern, this is really the first time as a commission we're talking about this. And so this is feedback and it needs to be, I think, a little more, just a little more work on it and a little more crafting of language to make it work and come back and we'll have more further discussion. I'm taking your job here, I'm sorry. But that just seems like when we've done other zoning, that, you know, that's what we do, we talk about it, we send it back, you play with it, or Sue plays with it, and we come back, we do it again. And I think this is just, you know, it, we're, we're at a draw, there's some concerns here by some of us, and, and now I'm having some other concerns myself that are different than those guys, but, but that, I, I don't think the language is complete, even though I voted for it and-
Maybe we need to have a special meeting.
This one's quite special enough.
Yes, really.
Maybe we need to have a special meeting on, you know.
It's just gonna be that the, the hearing will be on in July and not in June, you know, the way it goes.
I want to have a special meeting. I, I don't mind coming in another day.
Our next meeting is June 10th.
Do you want to have a special meeting?
Actually, no, really. I just want to get this processed, I really do. I don't, I don't understand what the contention and the difficulty is. We could add industrial, we can add hours of operation or not. We can resolve the language differences in items one through four and six and seven. We can make a decision about whether to drop five or eight or both.
I think there's philosophical differences that-
I think that the bigger issue here is the philosophical differences. To be really blunt about it, I don't see those being addressed at any special meeting in the near future. It's like-
Hours of operation, that doesn't go there.
That's not a philosophical question. And see, this is the challenge. Either we're, we can sit here tonight and puzzle it out, what language would be acceptable to the four of you, or-
I only need three of us.
(laughing).
But I can turn Timberly.
Right. Um, or we can reject the overarching premise, which is that the zoning ordinance should contain language that controls the operation of mobile food units and food carts and advise the select board that that's the conclusion that was reached tonight.
Yeah.
But I'm not really interested in saying, you know, we just need to keep on talking about it. Because either the philosophical differences such that that's, that's the message that we want to convey, or there's some aspects to the, the scope and the framing of the language that you can resolve.
I, I would vote, I would happily vote for this if I had clarification on when a decision would be made, if any, if ever, which I, I don't care about the hours of operation, but if it's gonna be on paper, I want to know what they are. If it's not, then, oh, well.
Well, it could-
And I want clarification on how many accessory uses can be-
I can go get the zoning ordinance now and check on the accessory use thing, that's fine. I think the question remains, though, are you in a position as the planning commission tonight to bring this to a conclusion, which states one of the two alternatives that I offered, that we advised the select board that for philosophical reasons we're opposed to regulating mobile food units and food carts?
It's not philosophical, this is, we're talking about ours, I-
Jim just said it was philosoph-
No, no, no.
Actually, I didn't say that.
I mean, Liz said it was philosophical. So there's either, there's either a philosophical dilemma here or you can massage the language till you're all comfortable with it. Or you could take the third view, which is that the, that you're in principle, you're comfortable with the language, there's some things that need to be clarified that can be clarified by the time the public hearing is scheduled and you can reach a conclusion on the night of the public hearing.
That's why I voted yes.
Right. I mean, so, so the threshold here is you seriously, either you, A, serious, feel seriously that there are so many flaws in the proposed language that there's no way you could vote for this at, you know, as it sits now, subsequent to a public hearing on June 24th, and that needs to be entirely redrafted. Or B, you think that with taking the input that was being, that's been provided tonight and some clarification and checking against the zoning ordinance, that language such as this could be adopted subsequent to the public hearing closing on June 24th?
Meaning that we go ahead and have a public hearing and vote on it afterwards?
Yes, you could do it on the same night.
We usually do that anyways, don't we?
Exactly.
(laughing).
But we need to be able to, we need to be able to show language-
We have to the public hearing.
We need to be able to show, like, we, you know, we need to be able to warn, need to be able to warn it and have some language for the public to review. You can't just go, come along and let's chat about it.
No.
You have to have language that, that's circulated and that they're responding to. Right?
Yeah.
So in other words, you would want another vote so that there would be some, there would be a positive vote for us to go forward to notice a public hearing. And at that public hearing, more comments and discussion could be made. And then after that public hearing, the planning commission could vote to amend or modify this language as they see fit.
Correct. In fact, it's not necessary for the four of you to agree with this language for it to go forward to public hearing. You could agree that it's good enough for a public hearing, that you're still opposed to it, but that you're not opposed to having this discussed in a public hearing and a vote on it subsequent to the public hearing.
Oh, there we go.
When you say subsequent to the public hearing, do you mean like the same night we just voted on it that night?
Yes, yes, so there's the schedule-
At the conclusion of the public hearing portion of the meeting.
The schedule goes something like this, you open the public hearing at 6:10, you'd end the public hearing at 6:40. Then the regular meeting would open and then you would vote on the adoption of the-
Motion would get put forward and then we'd have our discussion.
Right.
Based on our own feelings and the feedback we got from the public hearing.
On the basis of, right, including, including the discussion in public hearing.
And then either voted or amended or whatever.
Right. And then that would go forward in a report to the select board, who would then hold their own subsequent, their own public hearing.
Mm-hmm.
Close that and then vote on that.
Okay.
Right?
I'm okay with that.
You okay with that? That process?
Uh-
Doesn't mean you have to agree exactly to everything here.
Yeah.
Even if I'm not okay with the process, it's gonna happen, so.
Yeah, because I guess we're three, three one then.
Well, no, I mean, what do you-
I mean, the process is, the process is the process.
What do you, that's the process of adoption of an amendment to the zoning ordinance.
For example, I would propose an amendment that the language set forth herein is good enough for the town planning commission staff to proceed with a public hearing to further discuss and present the mobile food vending ordinance.
Even though I'm in a situation like this?
Well, you would be voting now, a, a separate vote from your prior vote to say that you think the language is good enough to go forward.
You don't have to agree with it, it's good enough to go forward to public hearing, where then we'll talk about it.
With the condition that the questions that you had asked would be responded to.
Oh, God, I don't know. Sure, I don't know, and that's, that, that doesn't, that doesn't-
But that's what you just said yes to a minute ago.
But it, it's, that's-
Just has to be put in a motion.
This, this, fine. I don't, I don't agree with this, but I don't agree with the language on here. But we can change it, right? Yes.
Yeah, I mean, your, your clarifications can be made, it could say remaining parking. What, we could clarify the number of accessory uses.
Yes, yes, there you go.
Okay, so let me-
It can be a statement about that.
Can I, can I respectfully suggest two motions? So the first motion reads, the language is adequate for the purposes of a public hearing to be warned-
June.
I'm sorry, June 24th.
Maybe we could work that by January, but I don't know.
I think I was just being realistic. Um, so is that, so the, the motion reads, the language is adequate for the purposes of a public hearing to be warned for June 24th?
This is an amendment to the previous motion.
No, this is just a new motion.
Just a new motion?
New motion.
Oh, okay.
So Liz moved it, is there, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. And then the following motion will list that your concerns with, uh, language in item number-
Okay.
Item number three and item number, oh, the item number three-
And the overriding-
And the overriding, um-
Accessory use issue.
Accessory use issue be, be responded to by staff.
So that'll be specific in a motion.
Yep.
So, would anyone like to, well, so the first motion-
We've lost the first motion, yeah. The language is adequate for the purposes of a public hearing to be warned for June 24th.
Okay, let's vote on that. All in favor?
Aye.
On no's?
Aye.
Okay.
So that's three.
That motion has passed, three to one.
Okay.
Okay, the second motion, do we have a second? On the second motion?
I second it.
Okay, so who moved, who-
The second motion is that the staff will provide clarification and revised language to the mobile food vending-
Right.
-section of the zoning ordinance.
That item-
At the next meeting. And these clarifications-
Will include, but not limited to-
Um, specifications about 3A remaining parking and the overriding issue of how many accessory uses are allowed within a parcel. Anything else specific that you would like to add?
Hours of operation.
Hours of operation.
And the industrial zone, industrial setting be included.
Okay, so that's the second motion, does anyone care to second that?
Okay, so just, just before we go on, you've not discussed hours of operation, did you want it? Are you looking for a-
If we're not gonna discuss it, let's not discuss it, but if it's-
Is it staff, you were looking for a staff recommendation on hours of operation or?
No, I don't want to.
No.
So, hang on a minute, you're saying that you don't want to restrict hours of operation at all?
They should not be, are you saying they should not be listed anywhere? They're not listed anywhere.
Are they? Well, that's the question. Who, who regulates that? Where, is it on the zoning ordinance? I don't know anything about hours of operation for an accessory use.
Hours of operation is something that's extremely clumsy and difficult to use...
Yeah, really.
...through the zoning ordinance. The way it would happen is there would be a complaint filed, the police would process it, and then we'd say, "Your, your zoning permit allows you to operate between 6:00 AM and 10:00 PM and..."
Dependent on the area.
The police, well...
Yeah, that's where it gets tricky.
No, I mean...
This is all in places where...
These are all in places where restaurants...
That's right, it's all public.
Where restaurants are already permitted. And so, I don't, don't necessarily, bars have a license that limits them to 2:00 AM. Restaurants, as far as I'm aware, don't have hours of operation as part of their licensing. I don't know that for sure, but my sense is that restaurants don't, but I know that bars are required to be shut by 2:00 AM.
I don't, I, why am I gonna address that first?
Yeah.
So, we'll be, remain silent on hours of operation?
And is that, and is that, the rest of the board, the commissioner comfortable with leaving, remaining silent?
Yeah, you mentioned it, that's only why I included it.
It's just one of the, one of the items when we discussed it today was that one of the things that we'd not addressed, and so the other one was to include industri, amend the zoning ordinance to allow for restaurants to be permitted use in the industrial zoning district, right?
Or at least for mobile food carts anyways.
Well, the way we've, the way we structured it is that restaurants...
Yes, yes, okay, got it. That way it's not limiting.
Okay. So, I have three items. The number of accessory uses allowed per parcel, item 3A language to be reviewed and industrial district to be included for, under four restaurants as a permitted use. Anything else?
Okay. Anything?
And I added these items, but not limited to anything, if anything else comes up in the meantime. Just so if there's...
Okay.
Something else that comes up that you want to...
Okay.
Add in that we can then discuss, um, allow, I want to allow you leeway to do that, I wouldn't want to be limited. Heaven forbid.
We're not limited.
We're definitely not limited. All right, so, who, did somebody move that? Sorry, I didn't catch that.
I think I moved it.
I seconded, I don't know if, who moved it.
That's fine, okay. So, what's the vote?
Okay, so, all in favor?
Aye.
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 I still don't even understand what the motion is at this point, it got moved, changed. Can you read the motion to me again?
That staff review and provide information on the number of accessory uses per parcel. Item 3A language concerning parking and, and include language for industrial district, allow restaurants to be permitted in an industrial district. So, it's just adding the word restaurant to permitted and conditional uses. And that is, these are, this list is, uh, I can't remember exactly what Carolina said, but it was like included, but this, you know, these are the things that staff...
Language is gonna be changed before that.
Staff is gonna review these matters, but it's not limited to this. So, if you come up with something else between now...
I'll vote on aye on this one as well.
Good.
Okay.
So, so this is, so I'm, so you're voting for this, is that what you said?
Yes.
Okay, so that's four zero. Great, okay.
All right, well, after that speedy unanimous decision, let's move on to subdivision regulations.
Oh, God. I think I'm a little patted. Hate to say. See, now it's eight o'clock and we've only, we haven't even got to the...
Well?
Luckily, you're not building subdivisions anywhere near as fast as they're going to be.
Yes, I hate to, I know we need to do this, but...
Well, I'll be happy to adjourn and wait for our fifth member at our next meeting, if that's what the rest of the commissions would like to do.
Sure.
So, is that a motion?
Oh, I guess, um...
I'll motion to adjourn.
I move that we just table item G to the, to the next meeting and make that be the first, one of the big, it's the subdivision, right, that that, I mean, we've been working on this for a while and it keeps getting postponed, but I move that we move that to